I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, October 17, 2022. Please call the roll.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Vice Chair Kerry.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Kaczynski.
Present.
In attendance.
Okay, let's call Stan and Lieutenant Regis.
I am Lieutenant Regis, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if there is any public comment? Please.
Hi, Carolyn Cassidy, 7 Hudson Avenue. I just want to ask you about or call your attention to ordinance 2020-05, which was passed in September of 2020 that effectively changed the rear setback for oceanfront properties to the coastal construction control line. At the May 2021 commission meeting, this subject came up in particular reference to someone who wanted to build a Dune crossover. They had just purchased their house. Ken Cleal got up and spoke at the meeting and voiced his opposition to ordinance 2020-05, which made the coastal construction control line the setback line. He stated that the commission should repeal the ordinance and allow the rear setbacks to serve its purpose. He further stated that the ordinance will become a bigger issue when more homeowners know about it. He asked that the commission request the Planning and Zoning Commission to reexamine the entire ordinance for unintended consequences. They voted three to two not to refer it to planning and zoning for a full overview, but I'm asking if you could please put it on the agenda for your workshop in November.
Hear from any of the commission members? Their feeling?
I defer to what the commission's wishes are. Same here.
Any interview?
I don't have, I missed that meeting, so.
Okay. Neil? Yeah, I think we'll pass it back to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, hearing none. Let's have the approval of the minutes or review of the minutes.
I have one correction on page two, the beginning of the second to the bottom paragraph. It's Ron Ellis, correct? Thank you.
Unless he's become an Ellis, or is he? There he is. And I think, is it Stuart Brenner or Brown?
Brenner.
Okay, I called that as well.
I have a general comment and suggestion.
Go ahead.
It's kind of hard to read through. There was a lot of things in here, like I'm on page two. It says Attorney Godot answered those questions as well. And what was her answer? There was another, there was a number of cases where this is, so I'm going to make a suggestion that take a look at the way the minutes were written up by our previous clerk. They were succinct. Very seldom did we have to make too many changes on them, but this to me was just, it could be done better. And I think, I know you will, but I just was lost trying to go through this. It was just vague.
Okay. Chair Marsh, if I can make a comment regarding that, right now, as you probably know, staff's got an awful lot going on, especially with us going through the town manager selection process. And one of the issues came up with obviously the change in clerk was in the past, you've got, they're kind of, they're not verbatim minutes, but they're more talking minutes. A lot of cities move to action minutes, which is consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, where the minutes should reflect what was done at a meeting, not necessarily what was said, because it adds an element of subjectiveness as to whoever's doing the minutes, as to what was said, what was important, what wasn't important. So we've moved a little bit more to action minutes. You still always have the audio of the meeting to listen to exactly what was said. So that's where that's coming from.
Okay, I'm just saying, for me, it didn't work so well.
I understand, but I'm just wanting to give you some background, explain what was, the change was, so you understand.
I'm letting you know that I'm not happy with it.
I was going to make the same comment Dave made. On page three at the top, an action item that reflects something I did at the meeting, didn't capture the sense of how strongly I felt about something and how that reflected in me voting no on a motion. And somebody, the way I would read this here, I can see two ways that you could interpret why I voted no, and you'll probably be wrong. So I just think there, I understand that we may have gone too far the other way. I think we've just now gotten too brief. Just, just a little bit, a little bit more expanded. That's my comment.
Yeah, I share that. I had more detail written all over mine as well, but I can understand the burden.
It's fine line.
Yeah.
Clearly, we all had, we're used to what we're used to, because that was the first question I asked the town attorney when I sat down, was if there was a purpose to the way the minutes were written, because I missed the last meeting, so I wasn't able to really garner the, the true feeling of all the members up here. But granted, we can listen to the audio.
Yeah, I agree with the other comments, is that especially when something was deferred, I come back to this and I want to say, okay, what was our thinking at the last meeting? And why was this deferred? And what are we going to focus on? And that really is not here.
Exactly.
So it's, I understand both ways. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments? Do we want to have a motion to approve as is, or with the understanding that this format is going to be modified from here on? But I think hopefully staff has heard that we want a little bit more explanation with the verbiage.
Well, I move to, to accept these as is with the correction of the two names in here, under the first approval and.
A second? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the discussion action items. The first item is a re-review of development for 60 Ocean Drive. I'll remind you that this is a quasi judicial hearing, and I'll ask if any of the commissions has any expartae?
No.
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 Okay. Hear from any public comment? Sorry? Oh, yeah.
Will anyone wishing to speak on the item, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you are called forward, please state your name and your address clearly for the record, and whether or not you've been sworn in, please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, any public comment? Just hold your horses, please. None. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Corey O'Gorman, Town Planner. This is a deferred item from your last meeting to address comments from Planning and Zoning Board. The revisions were recently sent out to you, and I believe, or at least an attempt to address the comments from Planning and Zoning at the last meeting regarding the side elevations. And I would defer the applicant for presentation.
Thank you. Okay, Ron?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Ron Ellis. Ellis Builders, 902 Clintmore Road, Boca Raton. I'm here today with Stu Brenner, who's the architect, Stephanie Portis, landscape architect for PLA, so I'll invite both of them in. It is a deferral. To remind you what it was, there were comments, I think primarily of some of the side elevations. Stu and Stephanie will bring you up to date of some of the modifications we made with the approval of our homeowner, who fortunately is a little bit flexible. We don't usually get that with a lot of our homeowners. But also, having that, we also want to suggest, and we took some pictures, there were some comments of concerns when you were coming over the bridge that you would see this house, and we just checked it with a more updated survey. But there are, all the trees in the environmental area are there and can't be removed. And if you're driving even from the top of the bridge all the way down, you can't see anything. So when we build this new house, maybe you'll see the top of the roof. But having said that, I think Stu will show you what we're modifying anyway, and we hope that everyone here recognizes the changes and hopefully receptive to them.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Stuart Brenner. Brenner Architecture Group, 751 Park of Commerce Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. Thank you for having us here this morning. Per our previous meeting, kind of walked away thinking I need to go back and look at some of the architecture of the home, some of the manipulation of the side facades, some of the stucco wall areas. And I believe we took a look at areas to redesign some things to deal with your concerns. Yes, as Ron mentioned, the property to the west of ours is very heavily wooded with landscaping. I'll just pass these around for anybody who may not have seen it. But when I was looking at modifying the facades, I put that aside. That's just something else that's going to be there. One of the items that we did, I'm not sure what we're looking at. If we could, let's go to the second floor, I guess, one more level up. That's good. Bring it down just a tear, please. At the top right of the image is the existing master closet that used to be all the way up to the eastern wall. I tried again to pull part of the second floor facade back off of the first floor wall to get a little bit of a layering effect, which we did that up on the second floor area there. And if we move the image up a little bit, the two bedrooms that are to the west, I also then pulled them back up again away from the western first floor wall to allow the roof to wrap the corners of the house in certain areas, again, to create some relief in the house. Other things that we did was also take a look at the facades and the house, both first floor and up, first floor and second floor, to see where we could bring some additional light into the house with windows, again, to add some architecture to the facades. Separate from that, we also took the garage floor elevation, lifted that up another foot higher, again, so the amount of wall that you see from the street is not as much wall. And I know one of the comments was the amount of header space that was above the garage door to the roof above it was excessive. So by bringing the wall, the ground up, and then also looking at the, actually, height of the garage and some of the detailing there, we were able to minimize some of that stucco wall scenario there. The previous rendering that was done did not show the steps going up the front door properly are bad mainly because when we first designed the home, we were sitting at seven NAVD, and then came here, got recommended to go to 10, and never got back to that rendering. But now you can see the steps that lead themselves up to the front door, the two-and-a-half-car garage with the master closet above it that stepped back from the wall. The angle, you don't really see what's happening on the second floor to the west-hand side, but at the lower elevation, you can see the garage to the east with the window that was added, with the lower roof wrapping around, some additional, additional window in the closet up above, a transom window to the kitchen, still maintaining its cabinetry, but again, bringing some more light into the house. And then some additional windows were added up on the second floor to the master bathroom area. This is the facade that's facing to the west, where again, instead of before where it was one straight wall going down, we now have the wall to the front of the house recessed back, a portion coming back out, then going back in again, allowing the roof to wrap the home at the first floor level. And I would probably say, one, two, three, four, five, six, about eight additional windows have been added to the facade, again, bringing some more light into the home. But again, dressing up that facade, which we believe very little of it, if any, will be seen by anybody based of what's there. Yesterday, I took a little hike out into the swamp, or into the wetland, whatever we want to call it, and from right in front of it to 200, 300 foot back, I was trying to visualize, see where I would visualize a home. And I think that we've addressed the concerns of what you had mentioned to me a month ago, and hopefully this will be to your liking. We're looking forward to get the home started, and the client's excited.
Thank you. Any comments? I'll just go.
I just see a significant improvement. Appreciate your.
I see a significant improvement. I appreciate the effort on your part and the homeowner. And the only comment that I would make is, yes, there is screening there now, but that entire hedge row is on another property, which you have no control over whether it's maintained over time or survives over time. So at least now, if and when there is openings in that facade, this is what people would see, and it's fabulous compared to what it was.
Well, thank you, and again, something I've mentioned to our team coming in, even once the shell of the house is built, then we can physically see. I'm sitting back there with my thumb, trying to estimate where a roof may come to. And once we see the shell if something else is needed, we'll gladly take care of that.
Yeah, I think compliments to you, because I think you've responded to the concerns. Just for clarification, the house has four sides, and you've taken it from a zero lot line to now, you know, a single-family residence that's exposed. So compliments to you, you scaled it down, and I think it's a vast improvement.
Thank you.
Sure. I would agree with everything that's been said, and I wasn't here at the last presentation, but just looking at the elevations, tremendous improvement. Quick question on the landscaping. We have requirement for street trees. I see a couple of guava on the opposing corners at the entrance, or those, do those meet our street tree requirement? Because I just noticed palms otherwise. Who can answer that question?
I think if I'm, somebody help me here, but I think we're entertaining an ordinance to encourage. Kirsty, help me here.
But I thought we have one now that requires at least a street tree, that's some sort of shade tree.
Yeah, the existing landscape ordinance is currently under review, and they're working on perhaps enhancing some of the shade trees as opposed to just palms. But I can look in the code and see if there's anything.
Well, even the palms has to be to substitute for shade tree.
For the palms to substitute for a shade tree, doesn't have to be a cluster?
No, that's, and I think that will come out in the clarification. It depends on the type of palm tree.
Yeah.
These are, are these, these are canary-type palms, right? Can you identify yourself, and have you sworn in? Please swear in. Oh, she did, okay.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Portis, the landscape architect, 2385 Northwest Executive Center Drive, Boca Raton. To answer your question, those are Sylvester date palms, so it is a canary cousin, but they are large specimen palms that typically count as a canopy shade.
Yeah, it's still a question. We have to define that. I know some towns.
Yeah, typically, these larger palms aren't clustered in three, like the three-for-one or two-for-one that you see in other municipalities.
Yeah. Neil, just for clarification, when you get to these types of palms, they can stand one for one with a shade tree, but the question is, are they a shade tree or are they a palm? But these are substantial palms, so there is a trade out there.
You also have Phoenix reclinata, which can get fairly large.
A reclinata can.
It tends to clump a little bit.
Yeah, typically, those are multi-stem.
Right.
Palms. These are single trunk with a much larger diameter trunk than a reclinata.
Yeah, well, I mean, you listed Phoenix reclinata as one of your palms, along with the Silvesters.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just referring to the ones that are in the front, along the street.
But that's, Kirsty, can you note that, that we need to look at that definition as to what's a shade tree?
I'll make a note of it, absolutely.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I like what you did, the west side of the house particularly, and I understand that maybe no one will see the windows, but it will allow more light in and create a better look. So nicely done.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
It went well. There are four sides.
Are there landscape comments or questions?
We're done.
We're done.
Thank you.
We're trying to break a record here. Okay, item three, which again is a quasi judicial hearing, any expartae?
None.
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 Thank you. Any comments from the public? Swear in?
Will anyone wishing to speak on the item, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, is anybody representing, please? Oh, sorry, let me, go ahead, staff.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners Corey O'Gorman, Town Planner. This is Development Plan Review for a home on Dolphin Road with the address to be assigned. The home includes three bedrooms, three baths, half bath, garage, swimming pool, and various site improvements. The current revision in front of you has addressed all of the staff comments for Development Plan Review and recommend approval, subject to your review in accordance with the town code. And we're here to answer any questions that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Terry, you have any comments?
Good morning. My name is John Lamb, 5485 Wiles Road, Coogan Creek, Florida. I'm the architect for Christine and Seth Iwali. We took an approach to try to stay modest, not to step on any toes, not to request any variances. So, you know, we've designed a small, traditional-style home. We were cognizant about three dimension on all four sides. We hopefully have addressed those issues with you as far as window placements and given it some character. It's going to be a steep roof structure, two-story. We do have front and rear porches. We think it modestly fits within the neighborhood. On the south side property is a two-story apartment building, and it's at the end of the street, right at the curve. And on the north side property is also a two-story, traditional-looking structure. So we do feel it fits, you know, cohesively within the neighborhood. I am here to answer any questions about architectural elements. Unfortunately, our landscape architect had a death in the family Thursday. He was planning on being here this morning to answer those questions, but, you know, hopefully he has addressed the concerns as far as landscape goes also. If you have any questions for myself or the owner, the owner is also present and the contractor is present, we are here to answer your questions.
Thank you.
I have a question. The front facade, the vertical striped, what is the material here?
It's Borden-Batten style, and it is a concrete, you know, block structure, but we'll be furring, you know, the outside structure, and that'll be a composite material similar to hardy board.
Okay, and what's, what's the finish look going to be? Is it going to look like wood, or is it dark or light?
Oh, no, it's very light. I mean, the entire house will be a white, like an off-white, and then the roof will be black. You know, it's supposed to just pop, very traditional in style, but it will be a wood-style home, but made of composite materials, so they don't rot.
Thank you.
When you, the closer you get to the structure, the more texture you'll see in it, you know, but it's not a heavy textured wood.
All right, I might just lead off again.
I think it's pretty interesting myself. I only had one question. When I looked at the west elevation, we have three window sets, and the roof over the mid set of windows is a flat sloping roof. And I'm curious why you chose that rather than maybe putting another peaked roof there would be too, overkill.
Well, it's not the overkill thing. It's always, it's always water. Whenever you get too many gables, you know, we worry about positive flow for water.
Right.
I didn't want to introduce crickets at the front like I did, so instead, we did a shed-style roof over that popped element. You know, we just thought that was, construction-wise, you know, safer product. And we obviously weren't going to do a flat roof area, you know, in that little section.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's refreshing, you know, that's a really wonderful area of town. It's very, you know, it really has a true character of what I think Ocean Ridge was. So I think you're respecting that this is more of the cottage look.
Correct.
I do have a couple of concern or questions, if I could. On the front elevations, all your fenestration, you have just played. On the front elevations, all your fenestration, you have just plate glass windows, no muttons at all.
Correct.
Which again is totally contrasting to the style. Did you give any thought to that?
Honestly, it's personal experience. I've been in homes with muttons, and it's, it's a continuous upkeep, but I was concerned with all the verticality with our Borden-Batten style already happening, that it got too busy by treating all the, you know, all the windows with muttons and stuff.
I agree with that.
It was our concern.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting, especially on that lower front elevation where you have, could you not interrupt? I agree with the visual, but in the, in the kind of clear story that you have there, could you do some muttons in that?
No, I would definitely present that with the owner.
Just, again, not impeding the visual connection to the outside, but I think, just to soften it a little bit, and I, I'm more concerned about the front, and I hate to say this, I'm a four-sided guy, so.
Sure.
This is, it's gonna be hard for me, but I think as a street facade.
Okay.
It would help, even on the upper ones where you have, you know, the, those are high windows, so you could create a transom across the tops.
Yeah, we can easily look into that.
But on the lower ones where you have the triples, if you lowered that transom a little bit and then just divided it, created a divided light, it may just, you know, help.
Okay.
Because I think the character is very traditional, and I think what you do on the south and west and east is fine, but I just think, I don't have the rest of the board or commissioner seeing what I'm seeing.
Okay, that's a good point.
The, where are we? I was hoping Neil had calculated every square inch of this. Where are we on the 75% with this covered second-floor deck?
Where are we? It's part, it's gonna be part of the joint meeting.
I know, I, this, well, this is a great example for that.
We're at 69.4.
Okay, thank you. It's a broader issue than that, but this is an excellent example.
Right.
As to what the concern is, because you've got a substantial amount of covered deck on the second floor for the scale of the house or the size of the house.
This is huge. This is probably my biggest observation and concern about this house, and is almost 1,000 square feet of balcony on the back of this house. This is certainly, you know, half of it's covered, a little over half of it's covered, another portion is open. It's not the direction we're trying to take, but if it complies, it complies, I guess is the answer.
Yeah.
It's a staff question.
Well, I think that's why this is perfect timing for, it's a little late maybe possibly.
There's no shortage of other examples, which I documented previously.
Yeah, but I think this one is relative to the scale of this house. It's, it's very clear.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I had this just starred and scarred here.
And the question for the architect, is he only access to that 946 square feet through the master bedroom?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So it's not something that's going to be shared with the rest of the household on a, you know, the grandkids aren't gonna be presumably running up there and.
No, it's safer that way.
What was the thinking of this massive size?
Obviously, you know, we've got structure beneath it which needs to be roofed.
Okay.
You know, and if I started doing another steep pitched roof, it totally changed the look of the house. You know, things got out of scale, so, you know, we went back and forth on how to treat that area. It's definitely a private balcony.
So it's basically, design-wise, you had a smaller section upstairs and a larger downstairs, and this is what, this is the difference.
To meet FAR, yes, yes, so it's a balance between FAR and, you know, and design style to try to keep, you know, that concept going.
To your point about, you know, the covering or the pitched roof, I mean, you've already got a balcony wrapped around, why couldn't that roof be back to the next column line inboard?
It's just a matter of, you know, we've gone through many versions and just got to this point that everybody was happy with, so we just continue up there.
It's gonna be a very dark here. It's, how many feet deep, 25? 21. It just seems if you'd shorten that and save the owner some money, I don't know if that's a concern, but you would be able to enjoy that deck just as much, because you'd have, you know, almost 12 feet of covered upper deck. It's just a, I think, as I heard, it's, it complies, but I think just from a livability, there's such a word.
If you shorten that, if you move that back chair as you're saying, how much coverage would you have on the first floor?
All right, I don't mean to be, or you just continue the cover right across. It just seems like the depth of that is covered is just, it's gonna be a dark area, but if the owner, the owner can speak if he wishes. Yes, if you've sworn in, I assume.
Yes, he is.
So it, it's actually open on all sides, it's not gonna be dark, and it's basically gonna be a workout area, and we don't bring it all the way across, because we want the light in the bedroom, that's why on the, I guess, whatever side it is.
No, that makes sense.
That's, that's the point, so I don't think it's gonna be dark at all.
That's east, this is east.
Yeah, I mean, and it's kinda like, why not bring it all the way out?
Can you just put the drawing up, the plan, please, second floor? So the rest of the folks can see what we're.
Opposite way.
Up, there you go. So, just point out what the coverage is, where it's covered versus, if you could.
Well, you've got the, well, you have the roof plan on the left side.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying for the audience, if they're interested, they may not be, but.
So that, it's, most of it's covered back in the, covered deck in the back, so if you're looking at this plan on the right side at the top, that's covered balcony area. To the left is open terrace, you know, open balcony area, with railing all the way around.
Okay, I think we hear the owner, and I think it's reasonably used, but we're gonna be watching this one for enclosure, because I, I think. Sorry.
One thing that occurred to me.
Can you come up, just state your name and?
Roger Brenner, Altering Planning and Zoning Number. One question occurred to me was whether in a hurricane, you've got a tremendous lift problem with that large covered balcony. So that's, I'd ask the architect that.
I mean, that's a concern with any kind of covered structure, open structure with problems.
Right, but this is so big.
Yeah, I mean, we have to comply with building code, so that gets taken into account with engineering practices, but, you know, same as the front porch. Front porch has uplift value to it, but we have to take care of that. I understand your concern.
There are small umbrellas and large umbrellas.
It's all physics, I'm an architect too.
Correct, oh, of course.
Okay, I think, I'd like to move on to the drainage and the landscaping, unless there are other comments, sorry. I'll just say, I'm sorry your landscape architect isn't here because, or the surveyor. There are trees indicated here, there are oak trees, which are ficus trees, and I walked around the site. And I let, sorry, I just, I just want to point that out, that the off-street trees that are claiming to be oak trees are really just overgrown ficus.
My comment on landscaping is, this lot, this house, it's going into one of the most mature, lush areas of the town. The most, one of the most eclectic areas of the town, and from what I see of the front landscaping, the house is going to be just a stark white reality. No consideration at all to softening the front with some greenery?
We originally had trees, but they were located in the right of way, so we had to remove those per engineering's comments, and because our septic drain field is located in the front, we, you know, we didn't have room to put bigger shade trees. It'll interfere with the drain field.
Can I, can I? The drain field could be split.
Yeah.
You're using a hoot system.
Hoot system.
Doesn't all have to be in one place.
This is a hoot system, but, you know, this is a hoot system.
Correct, so it doesn't all have to be where you put it?
Yeah.
And this, this, over time, will not mature into what's in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would also address your verticality with the, the banding on your house.
Yeah, I think, I totally agree, I think you need at least two shade trees, maybe in the southwest corner and to the south of the driveway. The hoot system can meander around anything, this is just a straight, rectilinear drain field.
Yeah, that was our fault, we didn't let the civil engineer know that she may be, you know, needed here, so we didn't let her, we didn't give her time to come, yeah, because, you know, this was designed by the civil engineer, you know, the drain system, sure, this is where she chose to put it, but that will be taken into account.
Well, it's an engineering solution, not an aesthetic solution.
Right.
Any other comments on the landscaping? Yeah, I think we just really have to correct some of the referencing here on what's shade trees, because there's not, there are no trees, even the sables are pretty well existing, three in the back, and there's no, no really reference to the two-story, you know, condominium to the south, as to how you're, how you're gonna create some privacy or privacy between, I don't even know what that hedge is, I couldn't find a designation for the perimeter hedge.
Okay.
Can anybody find what that material is? Yeah, I mean, it's a wonderful, I think, architecture, it's fine, and it's, it's some modifications, but I think we need to see a revised landscaping.
I agree, this is so much less landscaping than, you compare it to the plan we just approved. It's a.
There's plenty of room on the north.
And if I were the owner, I'd certainly want as much screening from the condos to the south as I could get.
I mean, it's, I don't know whose hedge that is, if you want to call it a hedge, I mean, it's pretty transparent.
What is it, is it like a rica? Because I've been there a couple times, and now I can't remember what it was.
There's a lot of seagrass.
Yeah, but it's very, it's just a mixture of, this has obviously been a vacant lot for a while, and, so I think you have to look at your side of the property, or the fence there.
Do we want to give it to staff to re-review the landscape plan, or does it need to come back here?
Well, I have to, I'd like to go back to the colors. You should just explain the colors again, if you wouldn't mind, on the.
I mean, primarily, the base house is all white. You know, the chimneys are gonna be a mortar wash finish, you know, blended, subtle, and the roof, the metal roof is planning on being black.
That's the problem I'm having.
Okay.
I think that's gonna be, I don't know if the rest, I mean, black roofs are not bad if you have a, you know, a tiled roof where you have some texture, and this is gonna be a, pretty well a monotone, just solid black roof. And I think it's gonna be incredibly hot, you know.
It's black, not bronze?
No, it was painted black.
Not the same color as the molyne?
I mean, it's.
Okay, understood.
But it's not, it's not, it's a stainless seam.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's an anodized material, which means it's just a continuous color, it doesn't have.
No, there's no variations in it, you know.
So I, I'm personally not.
It is, it's a trend right now, you know.
I'm not, but it's not a trend for this style.
Yeah, okay.
That's, I mean, I think everything else is, is fine. What is the fenestration color?
The trim color's gonna be just like the base of the house, that was the intent.
No, I mean, the window frames.
Window frames are gonna be black.
Yeah, it shows white.
It's, in the rendering, if I got it darker, you lose any kind of, you know, any of the ridges on the roof, that's why, you know, it's.
See the difference between this, where it's rusticated? I just have a problem with that, I'm sorry. A standing seam is fine, I think it's, it's fine, but I just think there, if it was a gray or something that was a little bit more toned down, I think this is gonna be, until the owners, this.
Does it not match the desired style with that other kind of roof on it or the other color is the issue? If you, if you look at this style of houses.
This doesn't have a pierced house, or?
Yeah, it turns out this is a modern farmhouse, coastal cottage style, and the style comes almost always with a dark roof, and that's kind of the standard style.
The key word is dark, but a black roof is not. Not in this part of the world, because it's tremendous heat gain. You will regret that if it does get approved, I'm sorry, I'm just. So I would recommend an alternative. I'd listen to the rest of the commission.
Dark gray, you know.
Dark bronze. Black is an industrial color, sorry. Anybody else have any feeling one way or the other?
I had a comment, oh, Dave, we keep doing that.
Ladies first.
I really liked the side-load garage in this particular lot, and the way you designed that, that's very nice.
Thank you.
I really like the whole, the whole concept. I really don't like to nitpick little things. I do think, though, that the black roof could be pretty hot. Now, I spend a lot of time in the Pacific Northwest, that's a big, in California, it's big there, but it could be pretty warm. I don't know whether we could maybe work it out with staff. I, the location, people are not gonna drive by and look at that.
Right, it's not a cost.
It's kind of a hideaway pocket, and I commend both of you for deciding to develop this responsibly, in my mind, so I don't want to see this thing overly delayed.
No, I, don't misunderstand, I think it's a breath of fresh air to have this style here, but I just think some of the components are a little bit in question, and we, we can either make it a condition, and staff can approve it, I think the landscaping, do you understand what the concerns are?
Yes.
I'm willing to.
Yeah, I mean, I like to defer to the owner's wishes on things, but I also like to know that we need to be responsible about energy efficiency, and this black roofs, you know, whether the owner has plenty of money to pay for the energy, it still has an environmental impact on everybody to have a dark roof. We have somebody? Yes, are you?
This is the contractor.
And are you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, you need to come up.
Hi, my name is Victor Palado, I own Rowan Development. To address the black roof, the dark browns, dark bronze, basically, it looks black, but it's one shade off of black, so you don't, it doesn't attract that much heat load. Also, we're gonna be insulated in this house with iconeen, so it'll be applied to the actual inside.
to the actual inside coating of the, of the sheeting, so it could pretty much contain it, where you're not heating an attic space, so I think it won't be that bad.
That, clarification, so you're suggesting that, that it be done in the bronze to match the.
A dark bronze is almost, it looks black.
Okay.
It appears black, it looks black, but it's not black, it's one shade off of black, but I think we.
Is that what's specified here?
No.
The dark bronze?
It's a black.
But it looks black, okay?
Well, what we're suggesting, the black is, I think, really not an appropriate color for this kind of design in a residential.
Overall, even with the dark bronze?
Bronze, dark bronze, which is almost black, is acceptable.
Okay.
But I don't think the black is, we have black roofs, or very dark roofs here, but in town, majority of them are tiles, they're rusticated, they have variable variants in it, it's not just a stark, even with the standing seam, it's just not an industrial appearance.
Right, because I'm doing three houses right now with this dark bronze, and it does look black, I think we'd achieve the look.
It, it is, but black will also fade, and anodized will fade and blanch.
Oh, colored through aluminum.
Yes, well, I mean, it's, it's still gonna fade.
The color through aluminum really holds up a little bit better than the anodized.
Well.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. So, question for the architect, I'm confused now, are, are we specifying a dark bronze, are we specifying a black here?
That's a discussion I'll have with the owner, um, obviously, you know, we, we have to get approval before we do anything.
Be easier for us to, to make our decision, if, if you're shifting to a dark bronze.
I think we'd accept dark bronze, but I gotta look at it, make sure it's what I just, you know.
Look at, look at my house when you drive by. I have dark bronze, you get the, I'm sorry, you do achieve that contrast with a dark bronze, um, and I don't happen to have, because I didn't replace my windows, I don't have the dark bronze mullions on the windows, so I think you do achieve that contrast with a white wall and a dark bronze.
Right, okay.
Alan, I agree.
I happen to know that, I'd like to see the landscaping of that. Do you wanna?
I think it's.
You wanna make a motion?
I'd like to motion that we defer in the landscape comeback, I think.
Can we phase it?
Pardon?
Can we?
Unless we can get some commitment today to, to put the shade trees in and.
Yeah, I think.
So that's my motion.
I mean, you know, well, it's a hoot system, so we'll just have to wrap some of the drain field around to allow room for the shade trees to fit within that area, but we can get that done.
Uh, Christie, help us here, um, we wanna help this applicant move along.
We would prefer it goes to staff, yeah.
So, based on the comments that I've heard so far, we have a recommendation on the windows that the chair mentioned, um, we have the motion that's standing to have the landscape with the shade trees, um, and then we have the roof changing it from black to the dark bronze, um, based on your conversation, it sounds like the landscape, the recommendation is to have those shade trees done and the, the drainage then adjusted to address those?
Correct, yes.
And is the applicant agreeing to that?
Well, can I, sorry, Chris, I think there's a little more than just the shade trees.
Yes.
I think the substantial improvement.
Well, we can, we can, we'll address the south elevation, which, where the apartments are.
Yeah, but again, look at the general overall, I, I, I can't speak.
The junipers are only eighteen inches tall at the front of the house, the laggasroom is only eight feet on the corner.
This is very meager.
It needs landscaping.
I, I'm surprised that staff didn't give you feedback that your landscape plan was inadequate, frankly, and, and we're, I, I've never seen this little of a landscape plan come before us.
Yeah, it's, it's really substandard, so that's a difficulty, I guess, the commission.
That's why I made a motion to.
The only other option, Chair Marsh, would be to defer on the landscape, but perhaps allow the rest of it to go forward.
Well, I'm for that, if we can do that, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, do you wanna amend your motion?
Um, so how, how do we state that?
So I think the motion would be to approve the development plan, subject to the landscape plan being deferred to come back before this board, along with the recommendations on the windows and changing to, um, the dark bronze.
Okay, I'll make that as my motion.
Second. Hold it, favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Boy, I got a lot of help, that was great.
They had a great motion. Now, we have, do we have a moment now for our comments?
Yes, sir, now we'll move on to commissioner comments.
I, I wanna keep this as brief as possible, but we always have a problem here with the elevation of our homes, and the immediate solution is to put in fill, build the house up, and try to constrain the water from going somewhere, I think it's inevitable that we're gonna end up building homes that, like we see in the Keys, and I don't know whether we have that option here yet, but I think it's something that we should consider, we could keep the elevation relatively low, we have a blowout section on the bottom where you can put your cars, then we have space above, and I, you may not want it, but it's gonna come sooner or later, and I just think we should be talking about it, that's my comment.
Are you talking about stilts?
Yeah, no.
Basically stilts, yeah.
Well, I, I think your idea is good, I think it won't be stilts, it'll be enclosed.
Right.
You have a thing called frangible structure.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
But we're not gonna allow stilts, we're gonna allow under, under.
Frangible structure around the supporting.
But you can park under the, the house, yeah, I think that's, that, we do that in the dunes all the time.
Would that be all within our existing height limits, that, that's what, I'm not looking to create a three-story house in a two-story neighborhood.
And the caveat, it would have to be mitigated with some kind of retaining or berming or something, so you just don't have, to your point, a three-story.
But it's gonna happen sooner or later, I mean.
I, I, I'm speaking personally, I, I've done it on the dunes.
But wouldn't it, yeah, wouldn't it minimize what you're talking about, Rick, because now you're not having to build up the earth seven feet or nine feet or whatever it might be by FEMA at that point, you're building at this level, so you're not going to get excessively high, or am I missing something?
No, but that's my point, you have to mitigate it somehow, you know, whether it's a berm or, or a terrace or something to offset that verticality.
We're, we're getting in some of these houses, number sixty that we did on Ocean Avenue first review, that they're almost like a half a story jump up to the main level.
Right.
But what Dave's suggesting is it would be.
A full level.
Be a full four level, which is just starting to make, you know, we still have a lot of ranch houses in this, in this community, and you start building a gabled three-story facade, uh, next to that, it's, it's quite the contrast, and, uh, you know, the, the lots aren't that big, you, then you start putting balconies and your, you know, your backyard's not private anymore.
Yeah, it would have to be limited to not the whole, for lack of a word, basement area.
I just brought this up, so, and now we're talking about it, so that's.
It's not as easy.
And, and maybe it would be something that we could mention at the joint meeting.
Right.
Just to take the pulse, because remember how long it took us to say, okay, flat roofs, I guess they're gonna work.
It just, I, I'd ask you to think about that structure on one side or both sides of your home.
In my neighborhood, two homes have just gone up for sale, it's, it's gonna change, that those homes will probably be, something will happen to them, it's just inevitable, you know, I'm looking at a shorter timeframe than you are, I think, but.
Well, you're younger than me.
You mentioned the joint meeting, do we know when it's going to be yet?
Working on schedule, they didn't know when for the.
I'd like to come back to the comment that was raised by Mrs. Cassidy, I think, on the onset, um, I know we didn't wanna discuss it in, in detail, we'll wait to the workshop, but I, I, I just caution everybody, you know, reversing setbacks and modifying or spot zoning in certain areas is not what we wanna do, I think it's, um, again, I, this is a statement I make over and over, other coastal towns have the same situation, abide by the same criteria, confirmed by Corey, and when we get into rearranging our zoning for unique situations, I think we're gonna fall into problems.
I, I agree with Mark, and I, I don't.
So I don't want.
Think, think it ends up on the workshop agenda unless the town commission puts it on the workshop agenda, I think this group said, we've, we've said it, we spent a lot of time on this, we set up a policy, and, and unless we're directed otherwise, that's what it is.
Chair Marsh, if I may, it is actually on the joint meeting, um, it was brought up by the commission in discussion at their last meeting, so it's on the agenda.
Yeah, and I just wanted to know that, that the person that brought it up, that we are not in a position to respond or to take, or give direction on that. Okay, any other comments?
Just, just, certainly this question about the balconies that came up on the second application today, uh, it seems like we have a number of things that are waiting on staff to get back, so that we can, you know, we, we'll discuss something actively, and it seems like it's, you know, a long period of time before it gets back to us, and I would encourage a quicker turnaround on these things, because it's frustrating when you know where things are going, yet you don't have the ordinance as supporting you yet, thank you.
Okay, um, and I don't know, we haven't, I know Lynn, we haven't made a date yet on the joint meeting, right? Can we just poll before we all depart? We're talking about November sometime, is everybody going to be here?
Yeah, some, sometime in November.
And what day, what day of the week would that be?
I'll be gone Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and then come back end of the weekend.
So that would be the twenty-second?
I guess.
Looking at my calendar, the twenty-fourth is Thanksgiving, so.
Okay, yeah, so that probably is too close to the holiday anyway.
Yeah, we would hope to have it earlier in November, we were just trying to get the commission through this week with their final town manager discussions, and hopefully hold it in early November, well, also, once more people from the planning commission were all back in town, because we knew several were out of town and had not come back into town.
I also have a commitment the second Monday of the month.
So that would be the?
In the evening.
The fourteenth?
In the evening.
Okay, motion to adjourn, unless there's any, so moved.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bang, bang.